Want to thank everybody for being here and. All right, I thank you very much and. If someone can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Councilman.
Catch.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands. For this world, liberty and justice for all.
Thank, thank you very much, Councilman Crandall for the flag. And why don't we just get started on the budget deliberations? So any questions or comments or motions from the members?
Mr. Chair, is this open?
Yes, well, is there a sure question or comment or emotion?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Uh, let me finish with Councilman, uh, Potoka.
Were you going somewhere? I'm sorry, I did not hear Councilman Potoka, okay?
No, no worries, go ahead, uh, Mr. Chair, I would yield to Councilman Crandall, I'm still trying to locate an accountant number that I'm interested in. So just give me a moment and I defer to Councilman Crandall, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Crandall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I'm making a motion that, uh, we cut $2 million from the Department of Planning budget for the Western Golf Association for the BMW Classic.
Is there a second?
Speaking on the, uh. Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I second it.
Yes, it's been moved and seconded, now we're going to discuss it.
Yeah.
Councilman Catch.
Yeah.
Why don't we start with Councilman Crandall? Councilman Crandall, you want to, uh, share with us why you want to cut it and add any?
I, I. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do not think that $2 million, uh, to subsidize a PGA golf tournament with sponsorship from a company like BMW at a club, uh, a private country club like Caves Valley Golf Club, is a good use of Baltimore County taxpayers' dollars. The PGA and BMW and, uh, and Caves Valley are certainly able to provide scaffolding and, um, other temporary fixtures for their own golf tournament. I do recognize that a PGA tournament located in Baltimore County is, uh, a prestigious thing and something that we can, we gain worldwide recognition for, but as Councilman Marks brought up in the planning department's hearing, this has been a privately funded tournament in the past. And when we're looking at the expenditure of taxpayer dollars, I don't think that this is a, uh, a necessary expense. And I think it is an expense that the private sector can, uh, certainly withstand in order to have this tournament here in Baltimore County. So that's why I made the motion. And I appreciate Councilman Cash's, uh, second.
Mr. Chair. Okay. Yes, Councilman Catch?
Just very quickly, I just think that, uh, this appropriation of $2 million, uh, a first of its kind sets a precedent that, uh, I just don't think is, is wise, uh, at this time. You know, I, when we were going over the budget, uh, my concern is the future. We are expanding government. And we don't know what the future looks like, I think we need to take a much closer look at, uh, projected incomes for the, uh, county. And I think an expense like this is something that really isn't, uh, necessary. So, uh, that's why I support this cut.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Councilman Catch, uh, Councilman Potoka?
So it seems to me that the idea behind the funding here is to strategically, um, invest on where we either have some kind of economic activity and stimulate economic, economic activity. So, um, as I understand it, there's significant economic benefit to having that tournament here. But I would say that it's important that we, as we invest in national and international tournaments like the BMW tournament, we also make that same investment in some of our aging commercial corridors. So what I'm suggesting is that, um, we evaluate, evaluate this as an economic development action, but also encourage other economic development actions throughout the county. Uh, and, and throughout and strategically, uh, direct them to areas that are in need as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond to Councilman Potoka?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, uh, Councilman Potoka, I, I am not dismissing the economic benefit of having a tournament of this caliber located in Baltimore County. What I am disputing is the county subsidy for the tournament itself. When you have one of the wealthiest golf clubs in, in the region, a company like BMW and one of the wealthiest sports leagues in all of the world, they can afford to fund their own tournament and in fact have already done so. So why is this new for Baltimore County to be ponying up for something that's already occurred? And as I said, Councilman Marks asked the question in, in the planning, uh, 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 planning department's, uh, budget hearing, how was this paid for last year? And it was paid for with private funds as it should be. So why Baltimore County all of a sudden needs to, uh, figure out why we need to spend $2 million to build temporary structures for a private golf club to host a tournament? To me, irresponsible expenditure of taxpayer dollars, and that's why I bring it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I went to the tournament last year. I don't play golf. Uh, I think I played one game in my life and they told me, don't worry about the score, guess try to come back with the same amount of balls I left with. And, uh, but I know that is an important, uh, sport to many people. And I know having gone to the tournament, I saw what it did in the area and I'm told every hotel was sold out, restaurants were jam packed, I saw literally thousands of people, uh, there. And I saw the economic boost it brought to Baltimore County and I was very proud when I saw it televised nationally. And they talked about a golf course here in Baltimore County, it made us, you know, it did a lot for us. Now, I had an opportunity to look into it and ask that I received a, uh, if you bear with me, a economic impact study that I have here from Sage Policy Group. And it talks about, I'm just going to scan it right now, 100 plus thousand visitors that came to Baltimore County, $23 million in local spending that would not have occurred in the region had it not been for the tournament, $11 and a half million in local expenditures necessary to prepare for the course, uh, $20 million in labor income, $54 million in augmented economic activities statewide. Uh, it goes on to say the local government in Baltimore received nearly $300,000, $350,000 in income tax revenue, $1.2 million in income tax revenue and more than $1.2 million in sales tax. So this is an economic study. And from what I understand, based on talking to people, last year, it, it was done, but it was, it was a loss to the club that, that hosted it, they did not make any money off of it. And I guess the question here, I'm assuming the administration is trying to supplement them or help them so that the golf tournament can continue to be here. I don't think, you know, believe me when I tell you, I'm the type of person, I don't like it when taxpayer dollars are spent on anything private. I don't like it when we build the stadium authority, build stadiums. But I'm a, I'm a realist, the world that we live in, this is the kind of thing that happens. To make these things happen because oftentimes they're not profitable.
Mr. Chair, can I, Mr. Chair, can I ask you, is it Baltimore County's fault that a PGA tournament is not profitable? You just, you just spelled out the economic impact that they had. Why is Baltimore County ponying up money for a tournament that was not profitable? If it's not profitable, then the PGA should choose to go elsewhere. Well, you can't tell me, you can't tell me the $2 million to build to build temporary structures in a private golf club is necessary for the, for Baltimore County to receive the economic impact that we already received last year without this expenditure?
I guess, I guess my.
And I'm, and you know what, you know what, Mr. Chair? I didn't go to the, the tournament last year because I don't really have the need to hang out with rich people at a golf tournament. And that's what this is about. It's about prestige with a bunch of rich people hanging out at a golf tournament. When BMW, PGA and Caves Valley Golf Club can afford to host their own golf tournament. Yet, we're on the hook for $2 million in this year's budget. That's my point.
It's not to me. And it cannot be so possible.
Mr. Chairman, I can't, we can't hear you.
Uh, waiting for the, uh, action. Can you hear me now?
Uh, not so far, but go ahead.
Okay, uh, I guess my.
No, you, you're garbling, we, I, I'll let, at least that's what I hear. I, I don't understand you. Madam CAO, uh, quick, do you know how much, uh, money the Caves Valley, uh, golf course lost last year?
Well, it is my understanding that it, it wasn't necessarily a loss, but the money goes to um, scholarships and things. And we do know that there was enough revenue to have, um, the, the scholarship commitment that they made. So you, you got to look at it a little differently. The, the money is going to the Western Golf Association for a charity, you know, any, any revenues and, and, uh, money that they would, would receive goes toward their scholarship program. But I do want to echo a couple of things from the standpoint of investment and it return on investment to the county. The, the issue here is we invest $2 million upfront to help with such a high profile event. The, the, the group gets monies toward the scholarship program and then from the standpoint of the revenue generated coming back to the county, we far exceed the $2 million. If the, the tournament wasn't here, wasn't here in Baltimore County, none of the other businesses, the trickle down businesses that the Sage report suggests would have gotten any money. So it's an upfront investment to build the necessary infrastructure to support it. It's a, it's a commitment locally and uh, from the standpoint of, of the state, the state was asked to, uh, support their, they're seeking these resources. But for Baltimore County to receive on the back end, the return on investment that we do as well as the national exposure in terms of our own strategies around tourism is the other piece for you know, our perspective.
Madam CEO, did this tournament occur last year without $2 million of taxpayer money?
I will have to defer to, uh, the, the team on that. We, we provided in-kind support and other kinds of things. We, we incurred costs because if you, you think about the costs associated with, uh, these events because we have to deal with, with, um, traffic which entails police. We have to deal with, uh, some of the infrastructural pieces that DPWT has to work with. Whether it's a cash piece or whether it's the, the actual operational stuff that the county has to do, money is spent.
Wait a second, wait a second. If we're incurring charges, why are we writing a $2 million check if we're the ones incurring these charges? Why aren't we charging?
Well, I can.
Why aren't we charging the event for the cost that, that we have? We're just, we're writing a check on top of the charges that we're incurring?
Well, this is the negotiation.
It doesn't make any sense.
What, what we're doing is going to essentially, um, match, this is what the, the negotiations are. This is going to essentially match what, uh, the state, so if you talk about, uh, taxpayer dollars, if you will, this is going to match. It's, it's from, from, um, my perspective, it is, you know, essentially matching what the state will provide through the stadium accord, um, stadium authority, but this is our share of, of what the negotiations are that they're asking us for. That's why it's in the budget because we believe that the event will, would give us a return on our investment based on our putting in this money upfront, given the, um, report that Chairman Jones just, uh, articulated, what came back to the county. To me, it's like an upfront cost that then brings significant dollars back into, uh, the county through revenues and, and, um, uh, sales tax and all of those pieces. This is what the, uh, group is asking of the county to do.
Madam CAO, are the scholarships for Baltimore County students or is it a national scholarship?
Uh, we'll have to get back with you, Councilman Catch, on, uh, the eligibility, the criteria for those scholarships. I would, I would dare not think that it would be, um, the Baltimore County students wouldn't be, uh, eligible. But just to be certain, um, I'm, I'm being told the Baltimore County students did, uh, receive some of the scholarship monies, actually scholarship recipients from Catonsville and Delaney, um, graduates receive scholarship money. So it is open to, uh, Baltimore County, uh, students as well.
But it's a national scholarship, I assume.
I don't want to make that assumption, I want to, um, um, be certain, you know, in terms of checking with the, the staff. So we feel like this is indeed an investment upfront that if you look at Sage's report, we definitely got more than a return on our investments in terms of supporting other things here in the county. The way the revenues come back in through taxes, the taxes come back to us. And I know on paper, $2 million seems exorbitant, but for a pro, for a project that brings us the level of return on investment as well as scholarship students, um, our students being eligible for some of the scholarship money, we felt comfortable bringing to you for your consideration, the ask, because this is what the tournament group is asking of Baltimore County.
I know that, I'm sorry.
Sir, I wanted to confirm that it is a national scholarship, but some of our students received a portion of the scholarship monies.
Okay, I, I just want to make a statement and, and from what the chairman read to us, it appears that as far as tax revenues come, that they, the tax revenues didn't quite get up to the $2 million level. However, I know that the rest of the, uh, advantages to Baltimore County in regard to people renting rooms, et cetera. You know, that, that's the other side of it, I realize that. But as far as tax revenues to the county, what he read, and I don't know if that's a complete list or not, did not come to 2 million, I think it was like, I don't know, 1.8 million or something like that.
Did any? It was not, there was not a complete list because, uh, I, I, I think it was like 350,000 in tax revenue, but then there was income taxes of like 13 or 11 million, there was a lot of other things on the list.
You said one and something for, uh, uh, income tax, I'm only saying what you, you know, so.
Madam, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks?
So, um, Madam CAO, um, what happened this year? Who, who paid for this scaffolding this year? Do we know?
You mean last year?
Last, the, the, yes, that's correct, the previous times this event has been held.
Uh, we'll need to, need to check on that, what costs were incurred from our side, but I know that we, um, they came back to us with a proposal to come back, to come back to Baltimore County because of what they felt was the success of the tournament and highlighting and that the fact that people came here. But we can, um, uh, go back and research who paid for what last year. But what we're saying is, we are, you know, trying to amp up our tourism, uh, activities here in the county. And the more people we bring to Baltimore County, the more potential we could have spin off, uh, activities in terms of, of folks wanting to host their events in Baltimore, uh, county. So an investment on the front end, which I know it seems like a lot, but what, um, Chairman Jones read from the Sage report, the, the return on investment was more than $2 million, not necessarily straight taxes, but taxes that generated back down to us in our local economy. So we're, we're looking at it from an ask, here's a national organization coming to us, asking us, and this is a negotiation, asking us, will we contribute X amount of dollars on the front end toward the infrastructure? But we can ask, um, what the, what the, um, what, who paid for what last year? But the stadium authority is contributing and has agreed to contribute, uh, to the event if this event comes back here to Baltimore County in 2025.
So I guess that's the question, this was in 2021, last one, I mean, I guess that's the question. I mean, this is a very large expense. I mean, there's no other way that this scaffolding can be taken from other site, from other event, I don't know. It's just, it's, it's a lot of money.
We, we understand that.
It's the cost of a traffic circle.
Yeah. Things cost money, but if you look at the, the backend return on investment and the potential for us to boost our efforts to enhance our tourism in this, in the, in the county, that's what we feel is, you know, you know what they say, you got to spend money to generate new money. And this is one of the areas that we feel strongly that we can do many more things, but it does take money.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Councilman Young?
Madam CAO, you mentioned the, this time around, Stadium Authority was willing to put money in, do you have an idea of ballpark, what they were willing to put in?
Uh, 2 million.
So it sounds like there's a match from state revenue, that we're matching state revenue that's coming in for the.
That's what, um, we are advised, um, the, the developers and planners of this event went to the state, came to us. But we're looking at what, at the end of the day, what is the return on our investment? More than just dollars, but what is the return on our investment in terms of our agenda around tourists?
I, uh, I appreciate that and I also just, you know, appreciating my colleagues, especially Councilman Crandall's, uh, consistent, um, conversation around spending of public funds, uh, you know.
Totally understand, I mean, totally.
Yeah, we have no, uh, you know, um, bigger responsibility than spending wisely. I, knowing that the state has put in funding and that we're matching it and understanding that usually when the state puts in funding, they're requesting local matches, whether it's from local government or from a local organization, that's also been requesting funds. I, I see more of a continuum of, of why we're spending 2 million to match funds that were coming in. I, I'm, and I, I, it sounds like I'm going to be defending a golf course here, I don't play golf, uh, I'm.
I don't play golf.
Well, we're a county of 840,000 people, next to a city of 500 some thousand folks that have two stadiums that have national events coming in consistently, and I'm sure, I'm sure, speaking anecdotally, that they also incur, incur costs when there's attracting national events for tourism, for, uh, economic impact. I, I'm hearing you, Madam A O, talk about the economic impact that you all studied and believe came from the previous event, uh, totaling more than 2 million. Yep, and which is influencing and informing the decision to put funds in this time, which they probably didn't ask for the first time because there was no proof of there being any economic impact the first time, but now there is.
Right, because it's new territory for us.
As we grow as a county, having no stadiums, having very few national, uh, events, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of the ordinary for organizations that come into any jurisdiction and request assistance from local government. And sometimes they get it, sometimes they don't. Uh, I would say that we're moving in a direction where our population continues to grow and we want to attract these types of positive events or events to bring notoriety in a positive way to the county. I'm, with the more, with the information you've provided, I'm more inclined to, uh, to, to not support the motion, but I do support, uh, Councilman Crandall's concern related to the, uh, the cost, but I understand more about the reasoning behind it, so thank you for the information.
You know, uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Young, I, I was just thinking, uh, we always want to bring in more tourists to Baltimore County and showcase Baltimore County. And, uh, over the years, this council has repeatedly talked about increasing tourism to bring people to Baltimore County, whether it be through sporting events or, uh, uh, waterfront. And, uh, I guess, I can't think of many things that we do here in Baltimore County that'll make as big a splash as this when I looked at that economic impact study. And when I saw thousands of people all filling up every restaurant, filling up every hotel.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can barely hear you anyway, but can I say once again, the tournament occurred last year without the county subsidizing any of this, the restaurants were filled, as you said.
The restaurants were filled, as you said, tourists came. But now we're spending $2 million. $2 million is two turf fields in my district. It's the cost of one traffic circle in David Marks's district. But we have money for the PGA, the wealthiest, one of the wealthiest sports leagues in all of the world. We have $2 million to subsidize them. $2 million to build temporary facilities for a private golf club, probably the wealthiest private country club in the whole state of Maryland. A tournament sponsored by BMW, Bavarian Motorworks. How am I going to explain to the auto workers in my district that we're subsidizing BMW for $2 million to build a stage so we can all go hang out with a bunch of rich people? It makes no sense. I'm not going to say it again. It makes no sense. The economic development argument doesn't make any sense to me because we've already hosted the tournament in Baltimore County. We incurred the cost. Now we're being asked to spend more. We incurred the cost of public safety, police, Department of, of, of Public Works and Transportation. We incurred the cost last year and now we didn't apparently incur enough cost. We're asked to spend more. $2 million.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be recognized.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, uh, everyone, Councilman Crandall, are you, are you done? Your statement?
I guess I'm pretty much done. Um, if you guys want to, but I, I just say we move towards a vote. I think this thing has been heard out. I've certainly been heard out.
You called a question.
You want to subsidize a bunch of rich people having a golf tournament, then that's on you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Rogers, I'm going to go to Councilman Young and then I'll come to you.
Mr. Chairman, you should go to, you should go to Ms. Rogers first. I, I apologize. Just go, if Ms. Rogers wouldn't have a comment, you can go ahead.
Okay, uh, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Councilman Crandall, I, I certainly, uh, understand your point of view as, as with a, a lot of things, but this is one time I'm going, I'm going to ask for your understanding of the, the strategy and the thinking behind it. Of course, when the, when the tournament came here, and I want to be, be clear, the tournament was in 2021. That was two years ago. This is 2023. This was unknown territory for us. We had no way of knowing what, how it would turn out or anything. Turned out very, very successful that the PGA and our, our, the local, the golf association came back and said Baltimore County was a really successful viable venue. They came back. The, the, the stadium authority was then asked for contribution to help with the infrastructure because now we know more about what the cost or et cetera. And then we were asked if we will contribute. This is a negotiation with the MOU. Of course, rightly so, we have to come to you to ask. And our belief, looking at the economic impact study, is that this is something beneficial for the county that does bring more return on investment for that $2 million request. It will. It was successful before. I'm sure it'll be successful in 2025, but at the end of the day, if we want to truly make our mark in tourism, we've got to invest money to bring people here because we don't have the structure like a Baltimore City with stadiums and, and venues to, so we're, we're more limited on what kinds of events will come here. And that's why I'm saying this is our agenda around trying to get more people to come to Baltimore County for their events. And this is a hu- a huge one. And that's why we believe that the investment upfront of the $2 million as a, as a, uh, gesture and match with the Maryland Stadium Authority to get this event to come back. But I do absolutely acknowledge your concerns and your position, as I always do. Acknowledge them, understand them. But I guess this is one of those times where I'm saying, we're trying to do what everybody wants us to do, is in, you know, increase and enhance our potential for, uh, tourism in Baltimore County.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Uh, Councilman Young?
I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was calling a question. Which means you call for a vote.
I did not hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was calling the question so we can make, we can take a vote.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Mr. Secretary, call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Urtell? Is Mr. Murtell on? Is Mr. Urtell on?
He does not look like he is on, Mr., um, Secretary. Uh, I think he may have gotten on. I'm putting him back in the panelist list. He was in the attendee list.
Mr. Urtell, you can unmute yourself?
I couldn't unmute myself earlier. Sorry. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Patoka?
Nay.
Mr. Catch?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it is a 4-3, uh, affirming the motion to cut, to make that cut.
Okay, the motion passes. Uh, any additional items for discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have three things I would like to, uh, uh, bring to the attention of the council. The first one deals with in our, in the council's message. I'd like to, uh, have, uh, part of it express concern over the, uh, academic performance of our students in the county school system. As you know, uh, in Baltimore County and most other school systems, the, uh, academic performance of students has declined. That's because of COVID, because of missing school, uh, et cetera. So I think we need to express concern about that issue and, uh, you know, say that we, uh, would, we, we, we support efforts to catch our students up. The next, uh, any, I guess, uh, any questions about that?
Councilman Catch, uh, I think there's no doubt about it that we want all of our students to do well. We want our students to have the very best education possible. And, uh, I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind that that's where we are. Uh, we're very happy, uh, you know, the school board selected a dynamic leader to lead the school in Dr. Yarborough, and we look forward to supporting her. And, uh, you know, to the extent that any student is behind because of COVID, we, we want to do everything in our power to catch them up. So that goes without saying.
Well, I think we need to say it. I really do. Because I mean, there's a lot of people out there so concerned about the direction of our schools. So I just, uh, you know, I mean, if you want to term it that we support efforts to do such, uh, so I have, uh, another, uh, two other things I want to suggest.
Okay, go ahead to your next item, Councilman Catch.
Okay, the next one deals with the education budget. I understand that the administration, uh, cut eight positions, yet the administration, uh, the budget, their budget for administration went up 4% or $2,500,000, uh, of which most of it came from special funds. Uh, the general fund increase was 580,000, uh, with the general fund, uh, appropriation, uh, they, uh, it increases this year over last. And what I'd like to do is to recommend a cut, uh, half a million dollars from the general fund. And, uh, with that, we're still increasing the administration by $2 million. And, uh, you realize that our administration, compared to school systems, our size is larger. And, uh, I think that we need to, uh, you know, I just wish we could transfer that money, but I'd like to see that money go especially into student services, that kind of thing. So I recommend a half million dollar cut to administration.
Okay. Yeah. Let me, let me guess, say that, um, I know we listened that they did in fact, uh, cut some positions from the administration in the school system. You're, and, uh, you're saying you want to cut another half a million dollars? I think it may be prudent for us to give Dr. Yarborough an opportunity. I know she's not new to the system. She's been here. But I think it would only be fair for us to give her an opportunity to make some assessment to determine what she needs. I mean, we can't say that we're very, very concerned about student achievement and then at the same time want to cut a half a million dollars.
Well, we, it's, the increase is two and a half million, and this would make it $2 million. Uh, you know, I can tell you as someone who has worked very intimately with the, uh, budget of the Baltimore County School System, uh, they have tremendous flexibility, and that's all I'll say.
Okay, so is that a motion, Councilman Catch? Should we call that a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm going to second the motion, but Mr. Chair, uh, the school system had every opportunity to defend their, their budget. That's part of the process.
They did. They did.
They, 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 they heard, we heard from them yesterday. So, uh, but I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, can you guess read, uh, what the motion is so that everybody understands?
Mr. Catch, uh, indicated a $500,000 cut, uh, to the school system's general fund budget allocated to administration.
All right. Thank you very much. Discussion on the $500,000 cut. Any discussion or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Marks?
Yeah, you know, I, I think we are doing a lot of things right in the school system now in terms of recruiting, uh, new teachers and replenishing vacancies hopefully. But, um, the, the spiraling costs from the administration has always been a concern for many of us. Uh, and it would be nice to see greater efficiency, uh, in that area.
Thank you very much, Councilman Marks. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Patoka?
So, uh, I understand why we want to limit administrative costs in the school system. However, I agree with, uh, the chairman that, uh, Dr. Yarborough needs to have every opportunity possible to, uh, come out of the gate, uh, with all, uh, cylinders firing. And, uh, I don't think it will be responsible to limit her at this point.
It, it's, again, it's not a limit. It's a $2 million increase with this $500,000 cut. So, uh, it, it is not. They're not as funny as they did last year. And so, uh, that, yeah, that, that would be my comment there.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Patoka. And I do know that with, I think we're up, I don't know, how many millions, uh, 60, 70 million dollars above maintenance of effort?
71.
71 million above maintenance of effort. Okay, so are there any additional, uh, questions or comments or discussion on the motion? Mr. Secretary, call the. Mr. Secretary, call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Young?
Nay.
No.
Mr. Patoka?
Nay.
Mr. Catch?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Urtell?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that motion is passed also by a 4-3 vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, one other cut. Uh, you all need to.
Okay, uh, that, let me, let me finish up the business on the other motion. The motion is passed, uh, four to three. And now we move on and you have the floor, Councilman Catch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like you all to, uh, uh, when it comes to textbooks and supplies, that budget is up 64%, 64%. Uh, increase of $14,900,000. And, you know, we talk about a new superintendent, Dr. Yarborough. Yesterday, I asked a question about what, what these textbooks, I mean, what, what are we spending money on? Are we spending money on materials that can be used to help our students catch up? Uh, because we have many that are not, had, did not, are not on grade level. And in essence, I got no answer whatsoever. Just, uh, you know, round, uh, an answer that just said nothing. And what I would like to do is, you know, as I said, I, I know about the, this budget, uh. So we're go- we're going from, on textbooks, from 23 million to 38 million. I don't necessarily have a problem with that increase in spending for textbooks. However, I would like to give Dr. Yarborough the opportunity to take a second look at this, a second look at the curriculum, a second look at what the needs are in our school system. And I would like to suggest that, uh, the 14, the 14, 15 million dollar increase, uh, be cut by 7 million with the hope that our school system would come back to us in the middle of the year with, uh, a request for, uh, you know, maybe the 7 million with, and tell us what it is that they are doing to improve the academic performance of our students and what supplies and textbooks they're going to be using. Uh, you know, after yesterday's session, I learned nothing about our school system. Absolutely nothing. I don't know that it's a priority of theirs to improve the academic performance of our students. I would assume it is, although it was never said. And, uh, I also asked a, a question, uh, you know, our, our teachers. Uh, you know, our, our teachers know what needs our students have. Our teachers, for instance, in, uh, math, I don't know why I picked that one, but in math, uh, know, uh, which student is deficient in what area. And in fact, it might be a situation where, you know, sixty-five percent of the students in a class are deficient when it comes taking percent of a number or whatever. But we need materials to identify where these weaknesses are, and we need textbooks, curriculum, et cetera, that will help to identify, uh, those areas where their weakness. And, uh, then we need materials to bring these students up to grade level. Uh, I don't believe that our school system is necessarily developing its own curriculum like we used to. I think they're buying curriculum. And I think the risk you run when you buy curriculum, it's not necessarily, uh, suited to our students at particular grade levels. We are much better off developing our own curriculum. In fact, Baltimore County used to sell our curriculums to other school systems because they were so good. And that's because we have, you know, a large base of teachers. We have very impressive teachers. And, and I just, uh, would, would like to see, uh, the seven million dollars. I'd like to see him come back, ask for a supplemental budget. Uh, of course, I'd have to do that through the county executive so that I can feel, we all can feel more secure, more optimistic that our students are going to catch up. So, and this, since we're going to get a new superintendent, I would think that this is something she would like to do instead of being tied to uh, what it is that the school system has planned to buy in the way of textbooks and supplies.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. I have to tell you, I, um, I personally, um, can appreciate your point of view. And, uh, we certainly want, you know, it's a, it's a tremendous amount of money. I don't proclaim to know what's best, uh, at that level in terms of buying curriculum, uh, developing your own curriculum. I don't know what it takes to do that. I, I, I get it. You have an extensive background in teaching, so I, I certainly appreciate it. I'm not so sure that I would like to, uh, go there personally in terms of cutting seven million because I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I did hear the budget hearing. I was here. I thought that, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Williams and others, uh, did an adequate job. I thought they were answering your questions, but, uh, maybe not to your satisfaction. Uh, that said, I, I, I'm not sure I could cut seven million personally. That's, that's where my position. Are there any questions or comments from the other members? Okay, uh, there, Mr. Secretary, why don't you?
Excuse me, there was no motion and there was no second. He was just.
I make.
Correct.
Right, so, uh, I was, Councilman Catch, that's another motion?
Yes.
Mr. Secretary, uh, there's a move, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
And the sec, wait, there's this, there's a motion to do what?
Uh, seven million dollars from the, there's a, uh,
Textbooks and curriculum.
Four percent increase in the budget for purchasing supplies and textbooks.
Yeah, that's the motion. Is there, okay, sorry.
And the, the cut is seven of the fifteen million.
Understood. Is there, so there was, that was the motion. Thank you for clarifying.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Last call for a second. Okay, the motion is, uh, not seconded. Uh, Councilman Catch, uh, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Can, can I, can I just say one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks?
And I'll be super brief. There is a lot of decision-making that goes into developing curriculum. Um, and on this one, I think we should, uh, give some, some deference. I appreciate Councilman Catch, you, you've taught many more years than I have, but on this one, I think we should give some, some deference to the school system.
Well, well, thank you, Councilman Marks. I would hope, I would hope, and I'm hoping that Dr. Yarborough is listening. Uh, I would hope that, uh, she would dive deep and make a sincere effort to make sure that every penny that we give the school system is wanted and necessary and will be used to achieve the desired outcomes, which is the best education to our students possible. And in that vein, if there is any monies not necessary or not being utilized in an effort to produce the best outcomes, I would hope, under her leadership, maybe you can see, and turn requests in terms of a refund, in terms of I did not need this money. Uh, so that's my hope. That's my desire. Are there any additional questions or comments on anything else?
It's, uh, Wade again, uh.
Councilman Catch?
Yeah, I, I have a question regarding, let's say, the police department, the Board of Education, and some other, uh, agencies of our county government. Uh, we have a number of vacant teaching positions. They're being filled by long-term subs, et cetera. You all know that, uh, what the salaries of teachers as compared to long-term subs, uh, there's a, a big difference. And we have with police, uh, vacancies, uh, and what my question is, at the end of the year, what happens to the monies that are not spent because we don't have, uh, qualified teachers in various positions? Or we have, uh, positions in, uh, our, our police force, which are, are not filled? Uh, is it, is it possible for these, uh, departments to use some of that money for another purpose? Or do they need, uh, permission from the council? And in essence, what is happening to the funds that aren't utilized because of vacancy?
I certainly have the answer, but I'm going to leave that up to the rep, read the hand before it drops.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I could take that or, uh, Madam Mayo, if you want to, it's, um.
No, that's fine. I had my hand up, but he probably didn't see it. Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, so, Councilman, when, when we're talking about general government, so the police department and our general agencies, the funding would revert back to, um, the general fund or the county coffers that is used to build in, to stabilize fund balances in out years. Um, BCPS is a little bit different where they, they are their own component unit, where the fund balance would lap into theirs. However, we have, you know, also utilized that for budget building in the future. As far as any transfers that are necessary, you know, that, that would run through our office, um, via an approval process. Um, but that, you know, that vacancy rate, you know, we have seen higher levels of surpluses. However, we did adjust turnovers this year to account for that going forward.
And, and the only reason I ask that question is I saw firsthand, uh, the use of so-called surplus money for other purposes, uh, when I was in the, uh, school system. So, uh, I think I better not say anymore about that. So, uh, I, I, I actually knew the answer to the question. It's just that I just want to make sure that, uh, uh, we get at the end of the year, this money back into the general fund and that it not be utilized for purposes that it's not intended to be used. Uh, and I'm not really referring so much to county government as I am to the Board of Education of Baltimore County, which, um, you know, I, I could tell you that, uh, and, and, I mean, it was absolutely true that many people in what we call the administration or what's that other second level, uh, mid-level administration, et cetera, were being paid as teachers when I was there. I don't know that that still is going on. But then that, since these individuals who were not in the classroom, they're being paid as teachers, so that made the teacher-student ratio look much more favorable than it really was. So, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll just say that that did happen. I'm not claiming that it's happening today, but, uh, I do, uh, I think you would, you would all agree that, uh, uh, our school system, uh, we give them all this money and they feel no obligation to explain to us exactly what they're doing or what they're not doing. And they're very reluctant to answer questions. Uh, and this, this is very concerning to me because I, I can tell you they have a very, they're, the attitude is, it's our money, we can do what we want. Heck with the rest, you know, who cares what the council thinks? Or the county executive thinks. Uh, and, and I could tell you that is, was the attitude when I was there, and it probably still is the attitude. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Was that a, um, there was no motion in there?
No, no, no. I just wanted to make a statement, uh, because all the frustration that we went through uh, during the COVID period, uh, with the school bus situation, uh, it was like pulling teeth to get answers. Very, very frustrating. And, um, it, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's almost an attitude of, well, it's none of your business what we're doing. And, uh, hopefully, the new superintendent, uh, will be, uh, will be open-minded and will, the message to the whole school system is we're going to be open and transparent because they have not been open and transparent. So, uh, that, that's not a motion, though. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Councilman Patoka.
Go ahead, Councilman Patoka.
So I'd like to bring up two items for discussion, um, and perhaps conveyance as we convey the budget back to the administration. I know that this body cannot add funds. We can only, and we cannot redirect funds. We can only cut funds. But what I'd like to do is, is reflect in our transmission, uh, areas of need that have been articulated and have not been addressed. And so let me start with number one, an area of need that has been articulated, uh, but not addressed in this budget. So if you read Master Plan 2030, there's a recurring theme in that master plan. And that recurring theme is that the planning department doesn't have the staff to address the planning needs of the future. And so I would say that that area be addressed because, like I said, it's recurring throughout Master Plan 2030 that there's insufficient planning staff for future needs. So I'd like that to be conveyed back and as part of the transmission to the budget, and I hope that my colleagues would, uh, join me in that. And I have a second matter unless there's discussion on that particular item.
I, um, I hear what you're saying. Are you saying that directive planning does not have adequate staff?
Well, we, yeah, if you read the master plan, there are areas of need that are planning activities. Like, for example, the CZMP being done every ten years. That's because the, the mobilization of staff that's necessary is not in place. Secondarily, the number of small area plans that need to be done. Um, there's not enough planners that are able to do that or were able to contract that out. And I think that while previous administrations have gotten away from doing small area plans, uh, the current administration has been more keen on doing small area plans in addition to the master plan. And so as I read through the master plan, like I said, there was, uh, there was a need for doing additional small area plans. There was, uh, uh, limiting the CZMP to once every ten years because there was not the ability to mobilize planning staff. Just previous to the planning department's presentation to this council, we saw the Department of Economic and Workforce Development add thirty new positions and viability. And so for me, that makes a statement about where the priority is because in effect, how you deliver your budget is an articulation of your priorities. And so I would say that we need a more robust planning staff to address needs so we don't have to have the CZMP once every ten years. So we don't have to, um, have an, um, avoid of small area plans that can guide us into the CIP and other needs that are important to council members and important to communities.
Let me just say that, uh, I know, uh, you were a planner and you are a planner at heart. And I, you know, to me, having spent thirty-two years in the fire department, I would love to stand here and, and, and say that we should ask the fire department to have more staff or the police department to have more staff. And I guess my point is, you know, this is the area that we have, uh, set aside for the county executive. It's his job to staff these departments. Uh, the director's jobs are to let the county executive and chief administrative officer, uh, Ms. Rogers, know what they need, and, uh, that's what they should do. And if the county executive and his staff decide that, uh, there should be more people in planning and less people in, uh, permits, approval and inspections, or vice versa, then that's, you know, that's, that's his job. So I, I guess I don't want to get, personally, I don't want to get into a, a situation where we asking them to staff up every department.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Executive is going to that again.
I'm just, I'm making the statement, uh, of course, yes, I do have, uh, some experience in the field, but I'm making the statement solely based on my read of Master Plan 2030 and the dramatic modifications that are suggested in that plan, uh, based on the staffing capability of the planning department. And, you know, it, it's stated in the master plan itself. And so that's a need that's been articulated by a document that hasn't been developed by this council, but has been developed by the planning department and I think may perhaps a consultant and community and community needs.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, um. So you basically just want us to make a statement to that effect during the budget process?
Yes, during the, I, I would defer to, to Ms. Irwin, but I think it's in the, in the transmission letter.
In the, in the budget message that the council, it's Tom Boswick, Mr. Patoka. In the budget booklet that the council puts out when it adopts the budget, as you know, we, we have the recommendations section where we express the council's concerns on a number of issues.
Okay.
Mr. Chair might be recognized.
Yes, Ms. Rod.
I just wanted to say, Councilmember Patoka, certainly hear you and understand and what Secretary Boswick just said. In those recommendations, we do look very carefully at the recommendations as we're looking forward in our, in our budget planning. Cause you know, we'll be right back at it, planning for 2025 very soon. We start in the fall and work all the way through adoption. But the one thing I, I did want to clarify, the 30 positions for due for Department of Economic and Workforce Development are coming by way of funding coming to the blueprint. That's our allocation for the, the pipeline. Yes, workforce development most definitely is one of the, the county executive's priority areas. But that doesn't mean that the other parts of the, the government aren't as important to us. The 30 positions are coming to us as a result of funding that, you know, is our allocation coming through the blueprint. But we will most definitely take into consideration all of the recommendations that the council gives us to make sure that we're keeping things in perspective as we're planning. Just wanted to clarify that about those 30 positions.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rogers. And I wasn't trying to compare one agency to another, but I was trying to just point out what we've seen over the past few budget hearings.
Right.
And the other thing too is I just want to be clear, I'm not just making this up. This is based on kind of the latest information of what we saw in the master plan, the latest version of the master plan.
Duly noted, sir. Duly noted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the right of him.
Which one? Councilman Katz or?
No, Councilman Mark.
Okay. I'm not going to be a broken record here. I'm frustrated by the, the project delivery of that traffic circle. I just think we should do everything possible on safety initiatives to move these forward. I, I, I spent a lot of time in the transportation sector before I was elected. And it's just a tough explanation for me. Go back to my constituents and say it's going to take four fiscal years to build a traffic circle. That's all.
Mr. Chairman? Can't hear you. You, you can't hear you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Katz. I was saying, I understand your frustration, Councilman Marks. I've been waiting for, I don't know, eight or nine years for some, some road widening and sidewalk. But the process can be frustrating and I understand it. You know, these things just don't happen pretty fast. I remember talking to Kevin Caminits about a bridge. We all remember the bridge in Woodlong. And he said, this is going to be an example of how long some of these things take. And it certainly took a couple of years because of environmental issues going over and did run streams. But that said, your point is well taken. And I'm not here to defend anyone because it's been four years, it's been four years.
And, and, and one more thing, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I, I was told this would not be an overnight project. I, I totally get that. My fear is that this is going to then become a five-year project. I mean, projects almost always take longer than they say they're going to be. And if it's a safety project, it should be really moved forward. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. And listen, I, I appreciate everybody indulging me. But now I'm back. Now I'm back in the studio. We have the flags flying. We have the Baltimore County Council logo. So things have changed now. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Katz and then you, Councilman Brandon.
Yeah, I, going back to Councilman Patoka's suggestion, when we do the master plan, when the council votes on it, I'm sure there's going to be some changes made. Would that be a better vehicle to express the concern for the Department of Planning in regard to the number of employees? Mr. Secretary, can you, is that possible that we could do it there? Which would be, you know, right, very direct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. Katz?
Yes, sure. We're going to do, we're going to vote on the master plan. And I know it's very controversial. And would it be a, would that particular legislation, once we're finished with it and it's submitted back to the county executive, would that be a better vehicle to discuss the need for additional staffing in order to carry out the mission of that agency? So I mean, is that, is that possible?
Oh, I, it, it could be possible, Mr. Katz, but it sounds, I, I just want to, I don't want to overstep, but it sounds like Mr. Patoka is, is talking about staffing issues, personnel staffing, and not so much what is in the master plan itself. Although the master plan, I think what is in there is, is the trigger for Mr. Patoka's concern about, about staffing. And so I, I think it would be an appropriate recommendation for the budget message as indicated earlier. And then once the council does receive the master plan formally for adoption, the, the council can make amendments to it if, if so desired. But I don't think that's what you're, you're, you're talking about.
No, what I'm talking about is since the master plan, the, the reasons given for some of the recommendations is the lack of staffing. If we go through and make changes, which I hope we will, that may need more staffing, wouldn't that be the proper vehicle, that legislation to, whether it's uncodified language or whatever, to make the point that more staff is needed in the future in order to carry out the mission? Because after all, I suspect that CZMP is going to be, remain every four years, not every 10 years. And I'm sure other recommendations may be changed. So if the reason for making CZMP every 10 years is a lack of staff, then I think that's a, would be an excellent vehicle to give our opinion that we need more staff because we think that, let's say, as an example, CZMP needs to be done every four years.
If I could add some clarity to Councilman Katz's comments. So I think that the master plan suggests a need for CZMP, for staffing for CZMP, and also for, to bolster up the ability to do small area plans. So there was two very clear needs articulated in that plan. And so in today, with the, in the space and time that we're in right now, that's the document that we have because, and we're acting on budget today. And so from what we know today, the items articulated in a master plan that we know of today suggests that there's a budgetary need in the future. So that's one thing. When we get the master plan conveyed to the council, then we can evaluate that on its own merit. And so I think, Councilman Katz, that they're in two different lanes right now. And those, those two lanes may merge, but right now they're separate lanes. And so we have to act within the lane that we're in, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And I was just, the only point I was making is I thought that by putting uncodified language with the master plan, that it would give more strength to the council's position that more staff is needed to carry out the mission of the Department of Planning instead of having it in a large document that's transmitted to the county executive. That's all I'm saying. That I thought it would be more bang if it were with the master plan.
Okay. We've got it. I understand. And thank you, Councilman Katz and Councilman Patoka. I certainly see a space where we can put that. I don't think it would be an issue. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I had a second item that I wanted to bring for trans, as we discussed transmission of the budget. And it relates to the sanitary sewer system. And in Department 201, sanitary sewers for in project 201 P dash O 90, which is miscellaneous system improvements. And again, we can't add money, but based on what we know today in various documents, there was a study done by RKK in 2012. There's currently a study being conducted by Hazen on the sanitary sewer system north of Lake Roland. And so we anticipate that that study will yield recommendations that require some capital improvements. And so what I'm suggesting is that in that project number, we, or we suggest to the administration in that project number that there be some very specific language that we're looking at a specific sanitary sewer that's currently under study. And I know I did receive a letter from Public Works and Transportation. And I just wish that could be, I think Councilman Katz was also a recipient as well. That could be a little bit more specific to kind of, so that the CIP, the capital budget becomes a reliable, transparent document. Not that it isn't now, but even more so. And so that we have some predictability about where we're going to allocate future capital dollars. And so I would suggest that that be conveyed in the message as well.
I concur.
Okay, I.
They're talking about the Hazen report, right? You're talking about the recommendations. Okay. I concur totally.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Say again?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll work on those issues for sure. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members, any additional items?
Yes, Mr. Chair, two, two last things. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure.
So I, I've asked our, our secretary, deputy secretary and auditors to include this in, in our budget message, which is a concern that I have and my colleagues concur, then I appreciate, I would appreciate that. The concern that the temporary federal funding through programs like ARP has been used to create ongoing costs in terms of personnel costs. And I don't want to belabor the point. I, you know, I, I understand that these positions are necessary. We're facing a bit of a hiring crisis in various departments. So I'm not disagreeing that the money is not being well-spent. However, when I cautioned numerous times that these ARPA funds should not be used for ongoing expenses, we, we were told that in every, I believe the, the wording was every effort has been made not to use the funding this way. So I would, I would like that conveyed in, in the budget message.
Repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Seriously?
No, this is the.
My, I would like, I would like our budget message, the council's budget message to convey a concern that temporary funding from the Fed in programs like ARPA has been used not for one-time expenditures, but for ongoing expenditures such as salaried positions. And Councilman Jones, did you drop off? Well, can everybody hear me, even if we can't hear Julian or, okay, am I?
Yes, sir, we can.
All right, loud and clear there. So yeah, so I don't, like I said, I don't want to belabor the point. I understand the positions are necessary. I just, I just want the, the concern recognized in official language in, in our budget message. So, and then my last thing, but I, I guess I'm going to wait for the chair to be able to sign back on before I bring up my last thing. Do we know where he is?
The chairman is still on and he is unmuted. I'm not quite sure why we can't hear, if he's speaking, why we can't hear him. He doesn't have his camera on.
I know. My point was made and it was, it was.
Sorry, Councilman Crandall, I was, Councilman Young, I was just saying, since you had the floor, it made sense, you know, while we're waiting for him to get back on, I think you can keep talking about your other point unless you needed him back.
No, well, thanks, Councilman Young. No, my other point, only other point is, anybody want to join me for, for this afternoon for, for 18 holes?
Something about 18 holes?
Yeah, you want to join me for, play 18 holes this afternoon?
Probably not. I, I, I don't know how to play it. I, I, I know the rules. I've seen people play it before. I think I know the rules.
I didn't see anybody.
What is a mulligan?
Anybody jumping the opportunity?
What is a mulligan call? What, what do you do there? Is that a do-over?
A mull, a mulligan is, is called the county executive's budget.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, that, that's okay. All right. Well, I tell you, that, okay.
A mulligan is when you, Julian, are you serious? You don't know what a mulligan is?
I don't know. I guess, I thought it was something like the do.
It's when you.
You get a chance to do it again.
It's when you hit, you hit a bad shot and you ask your partners if they'll forgive you on that last shot and not count against your score. And you can, you can play, play your, your shot over again.
I like that. I, I think I like when it's.
You shouldn't like it because it's cheating.
Well, I.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
All right, I'm complete today. I think I've had enough.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It sounds like we're winding down. I just wanted to make a statement. During the, this has been the first budget here I've been through. I appreciate the department's responses as well as the auditor's work on getting us timely reports. I also just wanted to point out that I've, almost everything that was asked during the hearings have been either responded to during or after, or at least have gotten responses from departments that have intended to receive a response. I have yet to receive certain responses related to the New Americans Health Work Group as well as the Sexual Assault Work Group from the Department of Health and the Human Services. And also I'm concerned related to the Department of Corrections. While they mentioned the MOU and answered the question there, still have concerns related to the use of the facility. While we all agree that it's not meant for juveniles, being used for juveniles. And even if the MOU was the past, not sure if that would then prevent juveniles from being incarcerated or. or held at the detention center for pre-trial. So with that, I'm not inclined to support the budgets as they are right now for both departments. However, I do look forward to hearing their reports or their responses soon related to both timeline for the report and what they expect over the next twelve months from those work groups. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Young. I hope you, Ms. Rogers.
Just wanted to acknowledge, just wanted to acknowledge Councilman Young's concern, sir. We will get you what it is that you have not received because we truly want to move forward with those efforts. And as the, the Director of Corrections indicated, Mr. Pesterfield, aggressive efforts are taken, are being taken to finalize this MOU. They're not twiddling their, their thumbs. And I'll make sure if you have not received enough information about what's happening, that you will.
I'll ensure that I clarify exactly what it is that I'm missing so that way there isn't any question. Thank you, ma'am.
We're happy to, to respond forthwith.
I believe, I believe you do. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilman Katz?
Yes, thank you. I had asked about the benefits that the average employee gets. You know, health insurance, the, the retirement, et cetera. And the answer I got, I think is a real eye-opener. For instance, with a person with a salary of a hundred thousand dollars, the county puts up an additional fifty-three thousand dollars for benefits. And the highest amount goes to health insurance at twenty-nine thousand dollars. So I just want to, you all to know because this county has a tremendous commitment to its employees. And I think the fact that the amount of money we're spending on retirement, health benefits, et cetera, demonstrates that commitment that we have.
Councilman Katz, I remember at one point in my career, my other career, I used to get a, it was, it was labeled as a hidden paycheck. And it listed all the benefits that the county had paid on my behalf for myself and my family. And I took it as being very education. And I think it's a great idea. And I'm certain the administration will look into it and hopefully oblige, not just give you the information, but maybe something that we can transmit to employees as well. Most of them they already know, some may not know.
I, I suspect a lot don't realize the amount of money that, whether it be the state or the federal or the local government spend on such benefits. I know when I was a, in the legislature and a teacher, I was in three retirement systems. And when we got our yearly statement, the amount of money that the state had contributed to all three of my accounts compared to the amount that I contributed as an employee, it was a real eye-opener. And because I think I contributed seven percent to the legislative plan. I think it might have been five percent to the, no, it was five percent to the legislative and seven to the school system. Councilman Young, I might be wrong about the legislative system, but I don't remember. But I think the, these numbers show the commitment that the state had and the county had to employees. And Mr. Chairman, I think you're right. I think numbers like that, I mean, you realize you have unemployment insurance, you have workers' comp, and you have social security, you have Medicare. So you put all that together and that brings you to fifty-three percent.
All right, thank you. Director Reed?
I'll, just, Mr. Catch, Councilman, just following up with that. And, and you know, what I, what I sent you was, was our fringe rates, you know, just to get an idea of what an average employee would look like, you know? And that's what we budget for as far as health percent. It really depends on what, what plan the employee takes as well on what that cost will be. But, so it's hard to, it's not always apples for apples and it varies by employee group, whether it's public safety or not. But I, I wanted to give you that example of, of what something would look like that I think is kind of a fair average. But, you know, it, it will again depend case by case on, on the benefit package that one chooses when they enter county government.
Sure, I mean, you know, there's two different retirement systems, well, three actually. And there's a number of health choices. I, as I understand it, I don't have insurance through Baltimore County, so I don't really pay attention to the options for health insurance. So, but thank you, it was a real eye-opener. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Ms. Rogers? You're muted, ma'am.
I just wanted to acknowledge that employees can see their contributions if they elect to get a paper page stub. Or now within Workday, you can see your contributions. You can see bi-weekly contributions and you can see year-to-date contributions. But you have to do a little bit of math if you wanted to see what, you know, the, the total, the way Councilmember Katz is, is referencing. But it's all there for employees to see. But I do support the, the position that Councilmember Katz is, is presenting because most employees don't consider that in comparison to other places or things like that. But it is, that information, Chairman, is indeed available to all employees.
Okay, thank you very much. And all right. Are there any additional questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to reconsider the vote on the WGA contribution.
Okay. You want a motion to reconsider the second thousand, I mean, the two million dollar cut?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. There's a motion and it's seconded. Now, when Councilman, I mean, Mr. Boswick, can you restate the motion so that everybody understands?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe it, it's a motion to reconsider the, the previous vote on the cut of the two million dollars from the Community Improvement Program allocated to the Western Golf Association. You're not, you're not voting on that actual vote, you're voting on the motion to reconsider that vote.
And then, and then we would.
If the motion is passed to reconsider, then, then you will, we, then we can consider it.
All right, there's been a motion to reconsider. There's been movement seconded discussion. Mr. Secretary, call the role on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. Urteil?
Aye.
Mr. Potoka?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Sure, why not?
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Okay.
I will say with my vote that this proceeding is, has just been made a mockery. So thank you for that.
Yeah, the, the motion has passed, fix the one. So now we will reconsider the two million dollar cut. Correct, Mr. Secretary?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The, the council's rules of procedure allow a reconsideration while it is still, while, while the council is still in session.
Okay, so now.
Can, can I, can I clarify something, Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Is, is that proper?
No, no.
Yeah, so I, I, I wasn't completely clear on what I was voting for the first time. Councilman Crandall, I, I agree with you that the optics of this look horrible. And, you know, and I, and I understand the economic impact as well that other council members have brought up and, and Madam CAO as well. I would hope in the future, when we're doing these things, that this is, I feel like lately, and, and I'm a freshman councilman, so maybe I'm talking out of turn here. But often we're engaged by the administration when there's a twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure for an outside attorney or something. But yet, we're not being, we're not being brought into discussions on a, of a six million dollar building that comes out of nowhere, that we, we didn't even know we needed. A two million dollar contribution to, you know, a golf tournament, which we know has a lot of, of, you know, cachet in the Baltimore County area. But it would be nice if we were brought into these conversations, not at the last minute. So we have to, you know, kind of question these things and, and not have any background on it as to what we were, you know, what we're dealing with. And, and I, I picked out a couple of things in the Pago budget yesterday. I, I don't have answers on that are some, I, I wouldn't say they're questionable, but just items that don't have a, you know, they're pretty vague or don't have a lot of good explanation for what they're for. And I don't know if, I don't know if that helps at all. But on the, on the golf tournament, it would, it would have been nice if we would have had some kind of briefing on that before this actually got put in the budget.
Councilman Urteil, I can't agree with you more. You know, these, listen, I, I agree with you. I don't think it needs any additional comment. I cold sign with what you said a hundred percent. And on that note, Ms. Rogers, we'll give you a couple of minutes and then I want to move on with where we are. Ms. Rogers?
Chairman Jones and Councilmember Otero, Urteil, we totally support and understand, and of course, lessons learned, just like the Washington Avenue Building. We acknowledge we should have sought a briefing on the golf tournament. That's something that we should have sought a briefing. We're learning as we go, but I'll say this, we try very hard to be as transparent and communicative as, as we can. But lessons learned and you have our commitment to do our very best to communicate issues in advance of coming to work session, et cetera. So your points are well taken and the administration is quite amenable to that.
I appreciate that.
There's nothing here to hide.
We, we understand.
On that note, Councilman Urteil, I'm assuming that you made a motion to reconsider. You would also be willing to make a motion to, is it necessary to have a motion to now undo the cut?
I think a motion on the floor, again, for the cut and a re, and a, and a, and a vote on that at this time would be appropriate.
Okay, so we already reconsidered. So now we have an emotion to.
No. No, no, we're reconsidering the motion. We're re, sorry, we're reconsidering the mo, the vote. It has passed. Now before us again is the vote on the original motion.
Should there, okay.
There's no, no need for another motion. It was a vote to reconsider the vote. The motion is still in, we're reconsidering the vote on the motion to cut. So right before us, there was motion and seconded to cut the two million dollars. And there was a motion to reconsider. We're now reconsidering the vote on the motion to cut the two million.
Yes, it is out there. Thank you, Mr. Young.
So now we're open for discussion. Discussion on the two million dollar cut. To rewrite, reread the motion when Mr. Secretary, did you do that already again?
The motion as originally made by Councilman Crandall was to cut two million dollars from the Community Improvement Program allocated to the Western Golf Association. And that motion was seconded by, I believe it was Mr. Catch.
Okay, so now everybody have that, we discuss. Anybody want to restate their position? Okay. Mr. Secretary, all the roll.
Mr. Jones?
No, I think you want to vote yes, don't you? No, I mean, if, if we're voting on the motion to cut. You're right.
Just to clarify, a motion, a, a vote of yes is a vote to cut that money. A vote of no is a motion, is a vote not to cut that money.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Mr. Urteil?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
I'm embarrassed for this council. I, I am, I am completely embarrassed at the mockery that you all have made of the deliberations. We had the deliberations, we had budget hearings. And now someone gets a, 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 a turn, a turn of opinion at the last hour when we're ready to wrap up? The question was brought up when the planning department put forth their budget. That was your chance to ask your question. This is a, this is a mockery.
Mr. Chairman, the, the moment for discussion has passed. We're in the vote.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I don't need to be lectured by anybody.
Nobody's lecturing anybody.
Well, I don't need to be, I don't need to be lectured.
Nobody's lecturing you.
You just tried to.
No, I just didn't.
Yeah, you just did. You lecture me. I don't need your lecture. This is a mockery and you all should be embarrassed that you don't know what you're doing. I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall.
Mr. Young?
Uh, no.
Mr. Potoka?
Nay.
Mr. Catch?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Can't hear you, you're muted.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Okay. The nays have it, four to three. Any additional items? Any additional comments?
So can I ask Mr. Chairman a question?
You certainly can.
So the total cut is five hundred thousand dollars to the school system budget, correct, in administration?
I believe it was a general fund.
That's correct.
And it, it, I, I can't even. So the seven million did not pay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments or recommendations for cut? For once, or twice? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council members. Thank you.